Thank you. We will now reconvene in open session. The Board had a four o'clock strategic planning update open session and we just finished closed session. I apologize for us running over on that. So, we will reconvene now at 7:16 in open session. And I would like to thank Rod Waddell again for being here. Rod's over here. He's a Jefferson High School graduate helping out with our broadcast on Channel 20. So, we thank you Rod for always being here. We don't need to do the pledge of allegiance and that stuff because we did all that already. So, we will now move on to recognition and celebration of outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. will present.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Board members. Each year, RPS 205 students are invited to attend an event at the Coronado Performing Arts Center, paid for by area donors through the Friends of the Coronado Foundation. This is the 16th annual event called Reach for the Stars. And more than 2,000 RPS 205 4th graders say saw Yamato, the Drummers of Japan, earlier this month. Cherry Valley Elementary School teacher Jody Severson shared the following message from this year's event. "As a 4th grade teacher in Rockford, I'm so thrilled to be able to attend this event every year. The looks on my students' faces when they walk in are priceless. Only four of my 29 students have ever been in the Coronado before that day. Thank you for giving them this experience. They will remember it always." Thank you to the Friends of the Coronado for continuing this awesome experience for our students. And we have representatives from Friends of the Coronado who are here with us this evening. Please join me in thanking them for their continued service to our students. I know you want to say a few words? Please, the microphone. No, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I've got two minutes, I've been told. So, it was just a great week. You heard about February 8th, we brought in the Yamato. And now, you know, take 16 years times 2,000 kids and so many kids have had this great experience. But just a week before that, on the 29th and 30th of January, we had something called the All-City Music Festival. And I think most of you in this room are aware of that. And I just want to read this to you really quickly. Nearly, it seemed like, just hours after that event, I received this in the mail. It said, "Thank you for especially wonderful all-city concert last night. How happy you made an old grandmother to see her children, two grandchildren, performing on the stage of the Coronado. The theater, not to mention their parents, were thrilled. This is such a magnificent opportunity for our city's youth and is so appreciated. I hope to see the special teacher performance next year." I don't know if you heard about that.
We didn't.
Yes, that was fabulous.
I was there.
It said, "The hats off to all that made this possible." And I, as much as I help, as much as I can, we did underwrite one day of that in the theater of the two days. But I just wanted to acknowledge, I know Emily Trop is in the audience, and Bonnie Sperling, stand up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That is all.
Very good. A great, great event and we appreciate all you do for our kids. We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting where we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted. And each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I will call two names. And the one whose turn it is to come to speak can come up to the podium. And then, the second, if the second person would move towards the front, we can dedicate most of our time to listening to you. If you look at the clock on the wall, it'll help you with your two minutes. And we appreciate and thank you for your interest in cooperation with our guidelines. So, our first speaker is Dr. Bob Griffin, to be followed by Dylan Ladd.
Thank you. I remember when we were convicted of racism and inequitable treatment of children and came under federal control. I remember when several behind-the-scenes people began to pray for District 205 and her children in 1995. I remember when remediation costs skyrocketed, taxes increased, home values declined, and people began to move from the district. I remember when negative rhetoric filled our local papers. I remember when we tried to find superintendent heroes who came and went dashing our dreams. I remember when we came out from under federal control. I remember when Dr. Lewis came with a positive can-do spirit and his five restoration rocks. I remember when we achieved a balanced budget and in November 2011 had a financial surplus. I remember when Sharefest rehabbed thousands of square feet of public school space. I remember the negative Limburger cheese-on-the-moustache attitudes that began to be wiped off as positive things began to happen. I remember when we moved to these wonderful facilities. I remember when Dr. Aaron Jarrett became our superintendent with Matt Bosberg at his side. I remember when the Register Star wrote October 14, 2012, "There has been more positive news from the Rockford School District in the past 18 months than we've had in the past two decades or more." I remember when test scores began to improve. I remember when school facilities began to be upgraded in a 10-year plan. I remember when new indoor athletic houses were built and when new schools came under construction. And I remember a creative, far-reaching strategic plan that was floated to the Board and the goals continue to be reached. Thank you. I remember.
Thank you. Dylan Ladd, to be followed by Virginia. And I'm sorry, Virginia, I can't read your last name on here, but if you'll be next. Alan, go ahead. Dylan?
Good evening. My name is Dylan Ladd and I'm the Coral Director at West Middle School. And I'm here with members of the RPS 205 Fine Arts Staff. We're here to first thank the Board for their tremendous support of the Fine Arts Program at RPS 205. We appreciate your attendance at our recent all-city events and your assistance with growing the arts programs by 15% in the past three years. Our students are excited about the opportunities we are able to provide them in collaboration with the Board, RPS Administration, and the Rockford Community. We wanted to talk to you about a concern with our current differential system. Under our current differential system, there are no descriptions or set of requirements for each differential, and it's up to administrators to decide what should be included in each differential. For this reason, extracurricular activities such as musicals, pep band, and after-school activities have become expectations of our co-curricular differential. The Fine Arts teachers desire to work with the School Board members and district administrators towards creating a variety of arts differentials that allow opportunities of growth for our students. Our current system creates inequitable responsibilities for each Fine Arts teacher. One example being that some Fine Arts teachers are required to add large activities such as a musical or marching band, while others that receive the same differential, or in some cases, higher amounts, do not have these added activities. Reallocating money in an equitable way gives teachers in RPS more flexibility in hiring for and accepting these positions. It also allows RPS to hold clear expectations in exchange for the differentials and allows for consistency across the district. Finally, it gives us the ability to address the massive inequalities we have between Fine Arts differentials and athletics differentials, which use a step-in-lanes formula. We hope to move forward with conversations regarding equal value of time spent in our differential system. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ladd. Okay, Virginia, to be followed by Mary Cowing.
My last name is Lucas.
Oh, Lucas. Okay, I'm sorry. Couldn't quite read that. Okay. Thank you for being here.
When I read the paper and you spent $50,000 on these desks, I had to come and see them. Not happy with the way you make your decisions, I would like to know whose idea this was, who voted for it, who did the specs, and I hope in the future you'll be more stewards of our money.
Thank you, Virginia. Mary Cowing, to be followed by Roberto Vargas.
Good evening. My name is Mary Cowing and I am an itinerant elementary librarian in the district. I oversee the libraries in Byer, Conklin, Kishawaki, Nelson, and Spring Creek. I am here tonight to say that I support the new school to be opened in 2019, replacing Nelson and Kishawaki to be named Jane Addams. The naming of a new school is not to be taken lightly. It is a great honor. And for the last month or so, I've embarked on an independent research project regarding the history of existing schools in RPS 205 and the people who have schools named for them. As a librarian at Kishawaki, I had the honor to share with the students the house that Jane built, the story of Jane Addams by Tanya Lee Stone, illustrated by Catherine Brown, Henry Holt, and Company Publishers, copyright 2015. The book chronicles her birth and youth in Cedarville, Illinois, her education at Rockford Female Seminary, her travels to Europe where her determination to devote her life to the betterment of humanity was solidified. She founded Hull House in Chicago where as many as 9,000 people a week were welcomed, fed, housed, educated, and cultured and transformed. After reading the book and teaching the lesson, it was especially gratifying to say to the students at Kishawaki, "Everybody, get up, look out the windows, take a look at that tall, white building to the left and to the houses straight ahead. These are the streets where Jane Addams walked. This is where it all started." The other names are presented for your consideration and very deserving names. But I say that this new school in this neighborhood, in my opinion, should be named after the first woman to win the Nobel Peace Prize, suffragette, founding member of the NAACP, the ACLU, and an author of 11 books, and who was once declared by the FBI to be the most dangerous woman in America, Jane Addams. I ask for your consideration and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Roberto Vargas.
Hello, I'm Roberto Vargas and I'm a senior at Thomas Jefferson High School. Schools are in distress. Students now sit in class wondering who could possibly have a gun in the room and start to count down the days until that one kid everyone knows snaps. It's difficult to focus on instruction when the only thing on our minds is, will we be next? Can it happen here? And will I ever see my parents again? Numerous students now worry more and more about how they'll escape when bullets start flying or if the person behind them will be the one to start shooting. This should not be the concern of the students. We should be worried about what the test will be about next week, whether or not we have the right colors for prom, or even if we have enough time to write the six-page paper. Our concerns should not lie in the realm of whether we'll have to all hide under desks and wait for the eventual moment when the shooter comes into the classroom or when the police finally come into the classroom to rescue us. But even then, the nightmare continues as we learn of our fallen classmates who were taken by the shooting. There are human beings whose lives are in danger and there are people in power who refuse to protect us by changing laws that are centuries old and no longer reflect on the guns that we have today. I came here today because we, as Rockford Public Schools and all the high schools, not just the students, but faculty as well, would like the support of the School Board in the March 14 nationwide walkout in support of stronger gun reform and stronger security in schools to help students feel safe. The walkout will be at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, March 14 and will be for about 17 minutes. We do this walkout to both show respect for those lives lost and because we hope to garner the attention of our local, state, and national government and make it clear that we need change to our gun laws. We also seek to show the Board and everyone else here that us students and teachers are aware and want to be heard on this issue because it is our lives in danger when no change happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. I would ask if there are any Board members that have comments this evening? Mr. Connor?
I just want to say thanks to all the Board members that did the walk-through at the new Cherry Valley Elementary School. There is great progress. It looks wonderful. It's going to be a really good, education-driven, cooperative and collaborative facility. And we truly look forward to the Kishawaki-Nelson replacement having the same characteristics and really providing educational opportunity for the neighborhood as well investment in that neighborhood.
Mr. Segal.
Friday night, we celebrated a, was it Friday night? Yeah. Celebrated a collection of students honored at the Ram Banquet. The Rockford Area Minority Management Group celebrated a couple of dozen of really outstanding students. The accomplishments that these seniors have gone through, the plans that they have, wow, were really pretty amazing. Was very proud to be in this group with all these, you know, really very amazing minds. And I know at a couple of meetings back, I said I was going to be mindful of the school shooting in Benton, Kentucky. Little did I know at our last meeting that we would be looking the next day at Parkland. Again, regardless of your politics on this issue, I think we can all agree, especially with this young man who spoke tonight, that it is the students who are really bearing the fear, the risk. And I hope that they can continue to come to school and enjoy a growing sense of safety as Rockford Public Schools tries to provide a good, safe environment for them to receive their educations.
Thank you, sir. Any others? I just want to also say thank you to Kevin and Todd for giving the five Board members on Friday a tour of the new Cherry Valley School. You did a great job. Appreciate you taking time out of your day to spend some time with us. And I also want to do a shout-out to Susan Fumo and some elementary principal and teachers that I got to spend the morning with on last Friday. This was a smart sharing session with Kishawaki, Johnson, Bloom, Barber, and one other, Nelson, with principals and three to four teachers where they were sharing their data, their plans for improving student growth, what was working, what ideas they had. They were using data and the Plan Do Check Act process. And I was just so impressed with the depth of knowledge that they were sharing with me and that the depth and understanding of where their students were and where their students needed to be. So, it was very rewarding for me to sit on that. And I would encourage any Board member to do the same whenever we have the opportunities to attend one of those. So, kudos to those principals and those teachers from that school. So, any other Board member comments? If not, I will move on to the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items: the meeting minutes from February 13, 2018, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid requests, log, and travel. The bid request for the Jefferson High School naditorium upgrades, which is the pool area, I learned. And the, okay, and the bid for the Walker Elementary School abatement. The other consent items, including the workers' compensation settlement agreement, the fiscal year 2019 student fees, the financial results through January of 2018, and the monthly investment report through January 2018. Is there a motion in a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Seconded by Mr. Dixon. Any consent items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Not? I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the consent items.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on to the closed session consent agenda items, including the HR organizational report and addendum. And the student discipline cases, unless otherwise modified below, the Board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations. In the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Students 4155, 4156, 4157, and 4158 are expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2018-19 school year. Student 4154 is expelled for the remainder of this school year through the first semester of next school year. The expulsion for student 2028 is held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of this school year through the second trimester of next school year. And student 5007, the four-day suspension, is affirmed. And the following students have received EIA's. They are students 3438, 3439, 3447, 3448, 3449, 3451, 3454, 3458, 3462, 3463, 3464, 3465, 3466, 3467, 3468, 3469, 3470, and student 3471. Is there a motion in a second to approve these closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dixon. Are there any items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Jarrett.
Thank you, Mr. Scirrano. I also want to reiterate what an outstanding event the Ram Banquet was. It's so great to see the accomplishments of our students. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Matt Parker and Emily Trop and our athletics group. We had a very robust Athletic Hall of Fame event on Saturday night that was well-attended and had a chance to recognize a lot of community members. And finally, I would like to thank the Board and our administrative team for carving out some time to make tonight an extra-long Board meeting to make sure we're keeping what's most important at the forefront, which is our journey to live up to our commitments for our five-year strategic plan that was alluded to earlier in the kind comments that we heard, and also continue to move the needle on student achievement. So, I think we had some encouraging news and some excellent dialogue with the Board. And so, this is something that we are committing to on a regular basis at the end of each of our MAP testing cycles to have a deeper dive prior to the start of a Board meeting. And that's an extra commitment on behalf of our Board and our admin team to prepare for that conversation tonight. So, thanks to everybody. And it was encouraging to see some progress from fall to winter. And we're looking forward to see how we do the end of the year. And I want to give a special recognition to the folks in the building who I think are doing some really fine work in schools. We saw some really encouraging signs at the extra smart sharing that's going on between colleagues and short-cycle goal-setting instructional coaches, our multi-classroom leader pilot. There are a lot of things we can point to. Long-term efforts to improve curriculum and assessment appear to be, we appear to be making some progress. So, thanks to all of the faculty, staff, and community members that are helping to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Move on now to committee reports. Mrs. McCulloch, the Ed Committee report.
This is probably inappropriate, but I tried to catch your eye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, you mentioned the naditorium.
Yes.
As you know, this is actually probably part of operations and I'm sure Mr. Connor can feel free to respond. But we do have, the money that went to the naditorium was out of 16.1 reserve deferred maintenance. And that was from our original task force. When I looked at the list of items for Jefferson, I didn't see anything on there about a naditorium because it's listed as HVAC. So, it would be really wonderful if what is brought to us matches with what we voted on or agreed to as part of our, that deferred maintenance plan. Just saves a step and makes sure that we all know that we're spending the money as we voted to spend the money. So, moving on from that, and I apologize, I meant to pull that one and then everybody was leaving and it was just...
Commotion.
Just combobulated.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So, we met in this room on Tuesday, February 20. We had three reports. We didn't vote on anything because we didn't have a quorum. Our first report was on the instructional coach implementation. Susan Fumo gave that. Another shout-out to her. She talked about the fact that we have 23 coaches in 26 buildings. It's all student-centered. A bunch of the coaches were here to have a conversation about, actually very specific to students that they're working with. The coaches work with the teachers on a five-week cycle. And they are there to help the teachers use the evidence of the student learning to improve the student growth. And we saw a little video of a little guy showing us how he sets his own goals and how he was meeting goals. And I know that you all saw during our update just a short while ago, this slide. And that was also shown to us during the meeting. 96% of teachers in a coaching cycle, that's that five-week cycle, increased the number of students meeting growth targets on MAP compared to the last year. So, just some good work being done in our buildings. And I think, are we growing the number of those next year, Ms. Tatman? We are, aren't we? Yes. So, the next item on our agenda that we heard about was the STEAM Academy at Haskell. We didn't get an update on the program itself. What we got was, I don't know if it was a plea, a report, I'm not sure what it was, but it was like information to say that some people think, especially staff is what our understanding was, are looking to have a conversation about moving from a year-round calendar, because it's not really a year-round calendar done with fidelity, to a traditional calendar. It didn't come to us as a recommendation from administration. It didn't really come to us that it was coming to you. So, I'm not moving anything on to you other than to say that we had a conversation and we suggested that they get more input, maybe, I don't know, we took community input or sit down with the group just like we did with schools. But that, the reasoning behind it, I mean, I'm sure that while it's, seems to be staff-driven, parents, according to the staff, are saying that, I mean, the staff is saying the parents are supportive, that there's concerns because students who are in a traditional calendar, their dates don't match up with the other dates. Yet, they have 77 students sign up for the lottery for 44 seats. So, there must be enough families that are interested in it. I'll just say that if it comes back as a recommendation, the Board will hear more about that. The third area was a report by Bridget French on College and Career Academy updates. Great report. There's a lengthy file on it. You can look at that on Board Docs. I think the most... I think the most -- the area that was -- makes a lot of sense is that in our current state, we have 23 pathways and some of those pathways have over 15 course options and that we cannot support that many pathways in our academies and do a good job. And so the recommendation for the future is that they're going to reduce that down to three to four pathways per academy so that we can do a better job and a more focused job in those academies. So the rest of the report is there. We are going to be meeting a day early in March, March 12th, which is a Monday in this room at 5:30 and the reason for that is the board is doing two board meetings, two weeks in a row in March because of, I'm thinking, spring break. So we'll see what we have to share with you after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Finance Committee, Mr. Rollins.
Finance Committee met in this room last night at 5:30. We also did not have a quorum. It was a fairly brief meeting, mostly on continuing updates on the budget update. Last night, we heard the presentation on the budget development for the financial services area. That is frankly almost entirely personnel. So we just went through for each of the different areas, the FTE assumptions or the FTEs are being budgeted, what we're budgeting for salary and benefits. The various departments have been given a directive to reduce their budgets by 1% so that we can pivot that 1% towards student achievement. They were showing us that they had met that directive and that they've reduced their overall budget by 1%. The other -- the only other item was to go through the 2019 student fees. That was as part of the -- we already approved that about 15 minutes ago as part of the consent agenda and if anybody has any questions about that, they can follow up with me or with Ms. Yar who gave the presentation.
All right. Ops Committee, Mr. Connor?
Ops Committee did not meet last week, but we will meet on March 6th, Tuesday, at 6:30 in this room.
Okay, well, we'll move on now to action items. Our first action item is 17A, which is the Special Education Private and Residential Placement Contract for Parkland Prep Academy. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? And I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 17A, Parkland Prep Academy.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next item is another special ed private and residential placement contract for Hamilton Academy. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Connor. Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 17B, the Hamilton Academy contract.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next item is the Health, Life, Safety Amendments for Eisenhower Middle School, Jefferson High School, Lincoln Middle School, and Roosevelt. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Connor. Second by Mr. Segal, I think. All right. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 17C, the Health, Life, Safety Amendments.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next item is 17D, which is the resolution authorizing the sale of a portion, a parcel of land at Jefferson High School that Mr. Baling actually presented last time. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? And I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of item 17D, the sale of a portion of land at Jefferson High School.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next action item is the license agreement for ShotSpotter Gunshot Location System with the City of Rockford. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Mrs. McCulloch?
Just wanted to say that somebody asked me after the last meeting what I had against this. All I was, was interested in having more information because I think it's, you know, other cities doing it. It's not that I was opposed to it in any way, very supportive. So I absolutely support this. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the licensing agreement with the City of Rockford for the ShotSpotter Gunshot Location System.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now on to new business and our first item is Dr. Jarrett on the naming of facilities.
After a very robust community dialogue, multiple community meetings, lots of very outstanding nominations, there are a total of five that are listed here, it is my recommendation that the new elementary school, number two, be named Constance Renick Lane Elementary School and it's my hope that the board can support that nomination. Thank you.
Any discussion? Mr. Connor?
First, let me thank all those that participated in this. As you heard tonight, there was a lot of passion around everyone and every individual that was brought forward and for every name. In this case, one of my comments, and I'll just say what a number of folks have said, is that the compelling case for Mrs. Lane was really wonderful to see and obviously made a difference. So one of -- from my point of view, my perspective is, we had a well-thought-out public process and in the end, participation made a difference. So I think that's a success and I want to thank also the board members. I want to thank the community and really the administration, all those that participated because I thought this was a great exercise in democracy.
Thank you. This item will be presented at our board meeting on March 13th for a vote then. Our next item is TransFinder, Mr. Slaf from the Transportation Department.
All right, good evening. We have an opportunity to move our system software for routing school buses. Currently, we use two products. One is Trapeze, which I believe we entered into a contract with them in the early 90s and when you use that software, it shows. It is very cumbersome to use. You have to go through many, many steps to get a child onto a school bus. And then we also use a product through School Dude for our field trips. This Trapeze software or the TransFinder software will combine all of that. It is very easy for us to then route students. Our map data will be 100% accurate instead of ranges on streets. And we think the address is right here. It'll be down to the house, very detailed and very up-to-date. So any questions or comments for me?
You want to review the cost for us?
There's a cost savings.
Actually, that's why I asked the question.
Yep. There will be a cost savings. Currently, we're spending around $30,000 just to keep everything up and running between the two programs. Our initial cost, I believe, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, was right around $27,000. And then the yearly service fee, which we're spending $34, drops down to right around nine, I believe it was. So it'll be quite a large savings.
Great. Any other questions? Mr. Escobedo?
So are there any expected savings in terms of operational efficiency?
We should be more efficient. We should be able to get students on buses quicker, which is always a challenge, especially at the beginning of the school year. Sometimes it -- we strive to get everybody on there by three days after they get registered. There's no reason for it to take that long. Once we switch over, it'll be much more efficient. And at the beginning of school year, to be honest, some of the -- it was weak sometimes.
Yes. I think we will know at the beginning of the school year, there's always challenges and --
Yeah, you should see a good efficiency.
But there's no metrics, no data that you can start collecting, the number of turnbacks or anything that, you know, you may be able to track and then a year later be able to compare and say, you know, we did actually make some operational savings.
We can use what we currently track and then go forward from there for the beginning of school year. So, yeah.
And then, kind of wondering, so there's usually, with new tools, new systems, at the beginning, there's always a, you know, there's always a kind of transition phase. Any expected challenges at the beginning and?
Yeah, we're gonna have our learning curve. Once we get approval in March, hopefully, we will get the maps updated, get everything here, and then we will sit down and we will strictly go through training. That will be our number-one priority. We will run the system side-by-side for quite a while. We have the other systems paid for all the way through the end of August. So we will run them side-by-side all the way up until the beginning of the school year and if we are on track, then we will go ahead and switch totally over for the beginning of the school year. If we're not, we'll have to figure that out.
That's basically what I was getting to. Is there a good plan in place for transition and -- thank you.
Yep.
Great. Okay, this will be presented at our march -- Mr. Dixon?
Yes, I have had the privilege of you showing me around and talking to you and your management team. I believe this is the one we discussed. Am I correct when I was there?
Yeah, for this offering.
Okay. And he answered, he asked the question that I was going to answer, ask you, was, were you going to have use on both until we actually change over?
Yep.
And so you answered that, so.
Okay. Okay. Any others? If not, this will come to the board for a vote on March 13th. Thank you. Our last item tonight is Mr. Hall on the Unite Private Networks.
Hopefully, this one's pretty straightforward. Currently, we utilize two internet connections for access to the internet district-wide. This contract combines those two connections into one through a different provider and increases the bandwidth fivefold.
We could hardly hear you.
Sorry.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Hall? Okay. This will come for a vote then on our board meeting on March 13th. I just want to remind you that we do have an unusual schedule in March because of spring break, so we're going to have two board meetings in consecutive weeks, 13th and the 20th, I believe, are the dates for our next board meeting, so be there or be square. Are there any further comments or agenda items for tonight? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Second by Mr. Segal. All those in favor, pose same sign. We are adjourned at 8:00 p.m.